Mayor Pro Tem Rebecca Chase-Williams and also Councilmember District One Rebecca Chase-Williams. And Councilmember Jim Iyer for District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates-Madison for District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia for District Four.
Here.
And the Mayor J. Max Davis is absent. We are pleased tonight that we have the Veebleos. The Veebleos won den from PAC 563 who are working on their citizenship patch, is that correct? These boys go to Saint Martin's School and Atlanta Academy. They're mostly Brookhavenites and they have come tonight to learn a little bit about being a good citizen and how our government operates. You may have noticed that the mayor is gone tonight, so I'm what they call the Mayor Pro Tem, so I'm like the number two in charge when he's out of town. And so I'll be running the meeting tonight. Do you boys have any questions? Oh, get your hat. Get your hat. And then why don't you all, I think you're in a pretty good position, they're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so why don't we all stand? Can you see the flag over here?
We stand for the pledge of allegiance. I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd say that was the best pledge we've ever had. Well, we invite you all to stay for a while and see how your government works. We have an agenda that we're going to follow and we're going to vote on some city ordinances, which are the laws for the city. And we don't have a real exciting agenda tonight, but we think it's all really important. It has to do with like how your garbage gets picked up and you know, some important things like that. But you know, all of us were elected by our neighbors and friends and the people who live in our district and we're all just trying to do the best we can. Have any of you ever run for office? Talk to me later, I got some work to do. All right, why don't you boys have a seat? Thank you all.
Thank you, boys.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight. We don't have too complicated of an agenda. After a week of March Madness and now getting ready for Master's Madness. I love this time of year, beautiful spring. Is there any more beautiful place than Atlanta and Brookhaven this time of year? So, all right, so I think we've got a few changes in the agenda. Should we just read those out? We're going to table number K five. This is the Intergovernmental Agreement between DeKalb County and for Police Services. That's not quite ready for us to vote on yet.
So the form of the motion would be to move to adopt the agenda with the exception of tabling the A five, or excuse me, action item five, consideration of the Intergovernmental Agreement with DeKalb County and Brookhaven for Police Services.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I so move.
I move we approve the agenda and amend it to remove item K five from the agenda.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. All right, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that item is removed. But we haven't accepted the consent agenda yet, right? Okay. So can I hear a motion to, oh, forgot the most important thing. We always have a time of public comment where people can come forward and tell us what they think about old or new business on the agenda. Does anybody want to come forward and speak? Okay. All right, well, thanks. We have the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the March 22nd council agenda work session meetings and the approval of the March 26 regular council meetings. Could I have a motion?
I made that we approved the consent agenda with the few, there were a few minor changes. I talked to Ms. Clark about it, the provider, a draft of my markup, there were a few typos that needed to be corrected in the two minutes, but nothing of substance. And I think we can go ahead and put them in as an idea.
As long as there are only, I've drafted changes, that's no problem.
There.
Seconding it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are there any announcements? Any name?
That was a fantastic Final Four game here in the city of Atlanta last night.
It was.
Really, good to see. No specific city of Brookhaven announcements.
The only thing I can think of is the reminder of April 15th, besides being tax day, is also the deadline for business licenses. If you have a business in the city, it's also due on April 15th. Or an apartment complex that also has to have a business license.
I'd like, I'd like to announce that we had, Sunday morning, the Latino Health Initiative had a walk along Beaufort Highway. There were five to 700 people walking up Beaufort Highway at 8:00 Sunday morning, trying to bring recognition to Latino health initiatives. They had a fair at Plaza Fiesta. It started in Brookhaven, in Northeast Plaza, and crossed over into, incorporated DeKalb and ended in Plaza Fiesta, but it was a wonderful event and with a great turnout and a show of force for the Latino community and some of the health initiatives that they're trying to institute for getting their folks more active in the community.
Also, I did want to add that this past weekend, Councilman Iyer was, I know, one of the volunteers out, but at Briarwood Park, there is a new playground that has been built. And the Friends of Briarwood Park has been very active in getting citizens out to help clean up the park and some of the underbrush and have done a tremendous job with building steps. When I saw Councilman Iyer over the weekend, I think he had a bloody hand from blisters from the amount of work that he had done, so I commend him on that. But to all of the citizens who have volunteered, thank you. And for anybody who's not seeing the park and the new playground, please stop by Briarwood Park, it's really nice. And a big park, actually. A second announcement that I'd like to offer is that although this is not an effort of the city in any way, I know that there is a parent, a parent group that is getting together at Ashford Park Elementary to discuss some options about proposing that school to be a charter school. So anyone who's interested in assisting with that group of volunteers and exploring that option, I would recommend you contact the Ashford Park PTA and they probably will have the right people to get in touch with them. That's all.
I should just, I just want to say a note too, but we had a fantastic week this last week where we appointed our new police chief, which was a great milestone. We're thrilled that Gary Yandura, who's currently in Hiram and previously in College Park, has agreed to be our chief and he will be starting up April 15th. We're hearing that he's already hiring people and he's getting cars ordered and he's just hitting the ground running. So we're very excited about standing up our police department for the city of Brookhaven. I was excited today to drive down Ashford Dunwoody and see that our city of Brookhaven crews were repairing sidewalks. It's part of a program that we have going while the children in DeKalb are on spring break. We repaired sidewalks yesterday over at Woodward Elementary across from Cross Keys High School. And today I saw they were pouring concrete and I didn't mind sitting in the traffic port. A cause well worth it. And we're just working hard to make that a priority and make it a safe walk for our children to school, so.
I'd like to just take a moment and recognize somebody in the audience who's here just about every meeting. Melissa, I understand you're up for an award recognition, is that correct?
It is.
Can you tell us which one it is?
Sure, it's the Atlanta Press Club's Rising Star Award. I'm a finalist for that.
Atlanta Press Club Rising Star Award, you're a finalist. Well, I think it's important that we acknowledge. Best of luck.
Thank you.
When are they going to announce the winner of that?
April 16th.
Sweet.
Anything else? All right, under, do we have any reports or presentations? None, okay. Under all business, Bill, do you want to read the ordinance post?
I'll sign the ordinance. This is consideration approval of ordinance 2013-0310 to declare the need for the creation of a development authority to function in the city of Brookhaven pursuant to provisions of the Constitution of the State of Georgia and Development Authorities Law, OCGA Section 3662-1 etc. This is the second read.
So we just need a motion to pass it?
Unless you'd like us to make another presentation.
No, I think we know what it is and we're excited to have it and are anxious to pass it, so do I kind of have a motion?
Yes, I'm going to jump on this one quickly.
I move that we approve ordinance 2013-03-10 to declare the need for the creation of a development authority to function in the city of Brookhaven, Georgia pursuant to provisions of the Constitution of the State of Georgia and Development Authority Law, OCGA 3662-1 etc.
Seconding it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Madam clerk, would you note that it has passed? Well, we're going to appoint the board right now. Okay, our next order of business is to appoint and recognize the development authority members and also I get to swear them in, the ones who are here. I think we did introduce some of you who were here last week and some of you who were not here tonight, but I am personally thrilled with the board that we've appointed. This, to me, is one of our most important boards that we, that we appoint. It has actually tremendous authority. They have the power to secure bonds and offer tax abatements as part of their toolbox of economic development elements. So you want people who are, you know, certainly smart financially and business-wise and certainly have the highest level of integrity. And we are just so blessed to have just great people of such high quality in Brookhaven and I think we've chosen some of the real leaders in our community here. So I am, it's with much pleasure that I'm going to be introducing you and swearing you in tonight. Let me just name them. I know not everybody is here. Should I have them go ahead and come up? Okay, so come up when I call your name. I don't think Walt Eimer is here. Walt was here last week. Walt is going to be the chairman. He's the CEO and president of The Waffle House. And no, you cannot get a free waffle one just because you know him now. Is Bruce Whitmer here?
Yes.
Bruce, come on up. Bruce is a graduate of Emory Law School, a fine attorney, and has been well-known in the community for a long time. He actually practices patent law and business law, corporate, oh, and tax law, even better. He also has been known to jump out of planes with the 101st Airborne in his past. Tim Payton is a, one of our cities, again, another great tax attorney, just recently retired from Alston &amp; Bird, just considered one of the best lawyers in America and super lawyers, has been, he's been named in that magazine. He's actually just recently retired from Alston &amp; Bird after 30 years and is actually doing some work for Habitat for Humanity, so I applaud you. Tim is well-known in the community and has been very active in Our Lady of Assumption and St. Pius and in his neighborhood as well. Susan Coker. Susan has been the Vice President and Treasurer of Cox Enterprises and, which is of course a big job since that's a $15 billion communications conglomerate. She got to work for the richest women in the world, so I guess that's pretty cool. We all know that Cox, at least their original headquarters, is up on Lake Huron in the city of Brookhaven. They keep expanding over in Sandy Springs, but Auto Trader, which they also own, is expanding in our city as well. She's handled bonding and financial planning and all the many complicated financial things that a large corporation like that does. Susan has been active in, she's been on the Board of Trustees at the Saint Martin's School and has been active in her neighborhood and other activities as well. John Rhett, I don't think he's here tonight. John is the just recently retired, I'm glad, actually, all these people have recently retired, that means they'll have more time to devote to the city of Brookhaven, not you. John is the CEO and president, or just recently retired, CEO and president of SunTrust Investments. So he comes, he brings just a wealth of experience in high-level financial trading and brokerage. Is Luke Anderson here? Luke Anderson is another attorney who we're thrilled to have with us. And, oh, I'm sorry, Pat Hoben, I'm looking right at you. Pat is currently with the Capital Cities Nissan. I knew him for years as President of Tron Kelly Motors, but he's been a longtime Brookhaven businessman and is a historic Brookhaven resident and worked on the Governor's Commission and helping to form our city. So is that everybody that we have right now? Wendy Butler is the attorney, who will be the attorney for the Development Authority. She's a land use attorney, a longtime Brookhaven resident and formerly with Alston &amp; Bird and now in her own private practice. So she'll be guiding you as well, as if we need yet another attorney. All right, why don't you all come forward? This is kind of a launch, so I'm going to give you a copy. So I want you to read through, asking you. So if you will raise your right hand. On my honor.
On my honor.
I state your name.
I, Bruce Whitmer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The Office of the Development Authority of the City of Brookhaven.
The Office of the Development Authority of the City of Brookhaven.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of Georgia.
The Constitution of Georgia.
And the Charter, ordinances, and regulations of the City of Brookhaven.
And the Charter, ordinances, and regulations of the City of Brookhaven.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
Due this state or any political subdivision.
Due this state or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I, by the laws of the State of Georgia.
Which I, by the laws of the State of Georgia.
Am prohibited from holding.
Am prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified.
I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And laws of Georgia.
I will perform the duties of my office.
I will perform the duties of my office.
In the best interest of the City of Brookhaven.
In the best interest of the City of Brookhaven.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Affection.
Affection.
Reward or expectation thereof.
Reward or expectation thereof.
Congratulations.
We have oaths been signed.
This board is going to have some exciting work ahead. We know for sure at some point in the probably not-too-distant future, the development around the MARTA station will be high on their list and so that's going to be a huge defining project for our city and probably many other opportunities along the way.
Yeah, so MARTA has listed that as an $80 million economic development, so it's a tremendous economic bill to the city of Brookhaven.
Up to this point, we've pretty much focused on establishing the foundations of the city. And in the very recent past here, we've been able to make some decisions that are going to really propel us to the next level, hiring the police chief, getting the ZBA onboard, the planning commission. And now by having the Development Authority, it seems like just an event that will hold in front of the platform, but we're about to catapult into another phase here where we're really going to be making decisions about what the city's going to be looking like for the next 10, 20 years beyond. And these are the people that are really going to help us to make that happen in a very, very big way. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve and we welcome you aboard.
Okay. All right, on to item number three.
May I, Council, this is consideration approval of an ordinance 2013-0307 repealing Chapter 15, Article 8, titled "Multifamily Rental Housing" and amending Chapter 18 nuisances by adding Article 5, multifamily rental housing in the code of ordinances. This is a second read.
I move we approve ordinance 20, excuse me, 2013-03-07 repealing Chapter 15, Article 8, titled "Multifamily Rental Housing" and amending Chapter 18 nuisances by adding Article 5, multifamily rental housing in the code of ordinances. And this revision is based on the ordinance that stated, or the copy that we have that stated 49, 2013 revision date.
Second.
Seconding it.
Any discussion? Jim?
Just one question, though. When are we going to, have we posted the revisions on the internet yet?
We will tomorrow, when the mayor's sound is on.
Okay.
Jim, you worked quite a bit on this. Do you want to just tell us briefly? I think we've taken the DeKalb County ordinance and tried to improve it.
Bear with me, the pollen is beginning to have an effect, so if my voice cracks, it's springtime in Atlanta. Actually, I think this ordinance started in the city of Sandy Springs and it's made the rounds and it's been added to and subtracted from and with the help of Michael Iyer and Susan Cannon, our development folks, I think we've massaged it and I think we've made it what I believe is a better ordinance. It respects some of the owner's responsibilities or lays out their responsibilities a little more clearly and also respects their rights as the owner and it makes for what I believe is a good relationship between the city and the apartment owners and lets them understand what our expectations are and how they can accommodate that with the inspections. Basically, this ordinance requires inspection of all multifamily housing units within the city of Brookhaven. The interior of the units are inspected by third-party private inspectors hired by the apartment folks and as part of their renewal for their occupational tax certificate, their business license, they have to provide a copy of that report to us, which says that all of their units on the inside are, meet a certain standard. And I think it's a minimum standard that focuses on livability and focuses on life safety issues in the city of, four units in the city of Brookhaven. There's a second component, which is mentioned briefly in here, but that's the exterior. That component will be handled by city staff concurrent and in addition to the work that's being done on the inside. So this ordinance sets us up to allow us to, or to require the apartments to sort of self-police themselves and also provide the mechanism for us to make sure that they are doing that and that they're providing us that information in the timely manner.
I'm just going to use this time to mention that we are really going to focus some attention on bringing all of our apartments up to a health and safety standard that we can be proud of. We have the impression anyway that many of our, and I think we've counted at least 72 apartment complexes, have not been regularly inspected. Many are in a state of neglect and we just don't think that that's the standard that we want to have in Brookhaven. And I would like to mention and give our city manager just a chance to tell us that I'm so proud of her. She secured a grant from DeKalb County, it's a community development grant, block grant, to really help us give this a jumpstart effort and really put some money into improving these apartments. Marie, you want to just tell us briefly what that is?
Yes, just quickly. The funds that we will be receiving from DeKalb County are housed under the Community Development Block Grant Program and right now, working with the Community Development Department of DeKalb in a start of $500,000 that we will use for purposes of improvements to the exterior conditions of the apartment communities. We are looking at and exploring right now about creating within that amount of money a grant program itself whereby we can have landlords slash owners of the apartment communities participate with their putting their money into making these improvements and partnering with the city. So we're very excited about moving forward on this project and we'll be entering into an Intergovernmental Agreement with DeKalb County for this specific purpose. We will be moving forward with inspections of all of the 72 complexes over the next 18 months and those will be completed from the point of inspection as well as coming up with a plan to offer and create the remedies to the non-compliance issues and then to monitor those improvements and corrections over time. So we're very excited about that. We're also looking at tying into that community and economic development and tourism opportunity where we can look at opportunities to bring people into the area along the Beaufort Highway corridor as well as trying to connect workforce housing through our apartment communities to places of stable employment. So we'll be exploring that through a plan. The Community Development Department here in the city will be working with us. It will run parallel to our comprehensive plan that we will be launching later in the late summer, early fall and will be a component of the comprehensive plan as well so that we can be sure that it is a document that gets fully implemented over time. So we're very excited about it. So we're very excited about it and very happy about the relationship that we're building with DeKalb County. Thank you.
Well, I'm very proud of our city manager for securing these funds and I think all of us consider Beaufort Highway to be the diamond in the rough and I think there's such exciting potential for it and this is just the beginning of some very good things to come. I'll also mention that we've taken some tours of the city in that area and we've seen some, I guess I'd call them deplorable living situations down there in which it's hard to sleep at night after you've seen some of that. And we've even had to condemn a unit and move a family out, a family of six with one child who had cerebral palsy, and find some safer living for them. They're probably not alone. So the sooner, if you see a sense of urgency from us about this, that's why, because we know it exists within our city boundaries and we're just not going to tolerate that and good things to come.
Absolutely.
To put a significance to the numbers, the way we were averaging, it was one per month on 72, put us six years out to have a complete round of inspections focusing on life and safety, which is our preeminent charter. This puts it from a six-year to an 18-month period. That is excellent and I applaud you for your efforts and your success in achieving that. Thank you very, very, very much.
And I think it's around.
Oh, so we ought to vote on this. Now that we love this amendment so much, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Madam Clerk, would you note that the motion has passed? Item number four.
Mayor and Council, this is consideration approval of ordinance 2013-03-11 amending Chapter 7 Buildings and Building Regulations. This is a second read.
I move we approve ordinance 2013-03-11 amending Chapter 7 Buildings and Building Regulations with the exception, we're going, and this is the version, again, dated 419, excuse me, 49 in 2013, with the exception, we're striking in its entirety Section 7-1. We're also striking Section 7-52B, 2L. Both of those sections will be removed from the draft that is approved this evening. It shows you about council.
Okay, can I have a second?
Aye, second.
Any discussion? Again, this is another ordinance that we've spent some time to kind of clean up and vet, taken some things that are just out of date. One of the sections that we took out talked about log homes, so I think we felt that we probably could remove that. Any other discussion?
Part of what we also cleaned up in this is, and this is something that I hope we can get instituted fairly quickly, is the establishment of a building council that will allow certain members of the community who have specific knowledge of the trades, whether it be construction or engineering or whatever, to meet on a regular basis and work with staff to begin further massage ordinances and clean them up and also provide guidance and insight from the private sector in how our codes and ordinances are affecting some of the ways that we do business and hopefully we can come to an agreement with certain changes that will make our systems more efficient and will also help us make it easier for people to do business in the city of Brookhaven in the long term.
One question on the motion. Did you say the Second Amendment was to strike B through L?
752.
752.
Yeah, 752.
Yeah.
752, Section B.
Through L.
No, no, Section B, 2L.
2.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, I don't know how you say that, subsection from 2, just the L?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's correct. I thought you were striking within the subsection to B through L.
No, no, no. It is.
Right. Yeah, and I.
50 different numbers to get down to that particular section.
Yeah, golfing.
Let's vote. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
You want to post?
Before you announce your vote, let me just make sure that I have it just right on the motion.
The, all the letters, you want to get the letters correct on it?
I just want to check, one more check. My Community Development Director came up before you announced your vote.
I'm removing 71 in its entirety.
Follow the pedal to the metal. You take them off, that's fine. They'll adequately be scratched. That's fine.
Are we good?
We're good to go.
Okay.
With that, the vote, the motion has passed.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you take note of that? We have table item number five, item number six, an action item.
Mayor and Council, this is a consideration approval of intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County for Solid Waste Management Services. This is deferred from 32613. It's previously discussed in the work session. We can further discuss it if you would like. This simply is a continuation of waste services by the county under an intergovernmental agreement and it provides that the city council make an election between 1 and 2 garbage pickups a week by the end of April and further provides that the city manager will work with DeKalb County on recycling, on their recycling efforts and that meeting will occur before the end of April also.
Okay. Can I have a motion? Do I need a motion?
I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County for Solid Waste Management Services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Good discussion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure to clarify. So the date in which we need to give them the determination of whether we're going to two, the choice of two solid waste days or one, just for the solid waste, is our next council meeting? We will have to make a final determination on that.
That'd be correct. The agreement says that we'll get notice by the 30th of April, so it'll have to be at the next meeting.
Or would the approval of this allow that to be an administrative decision?
I believe that you all need to make a vote on that.
Good.
Some of you may remember, we've had a poll up on our website that was up for a while and I believe DeKalb County just wrapped up a poll. This is the decision between whether you want to have once a week solid waste pickup or keep it the way it is now with the two. It's a higher rate. It's the difference between keeping both, two times a week at 305 a year or the once-a-week solid waste pickup at 265. The yard waste and the recycling remains the same one time each. So if you have a preference, go on the, we'll try to put up that poll again, so let us know if you feel strongly one way or the other. Because we just said we have to let the county know by the end of the month what the city of Brookhaven is going to do. It doesn't have to be the same as DeKalb County. We can decide something that's different than what they choose.
Unless there is a dramatic shift, the poll so far is leading towards three picks up, three pickup per week at the current $265 a year.
Yeah, so a decrease of one solid waste.
It would be one solid waste, one recyclable and one yard waste versus the two solid waste.
While keeping the same price that you pay now. Okay. Can I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Madam Clerk, I assume the motion has passed. Do we have any new business? Is there any other business? Do we have any public comments? Oh my gosh, I know him.
Sorry about that.
It's a good thing. It's good to be known.
I have to tell you, I worked with Jim McKechnie for 20 years at ABC News. He was a top-notch film editor and technician and Mr. Fix-It.
Well, you're very kind. Thank you very much.
And now he lives in, well, you don't even live in my district now. Do you live in Brookhaven?
I don't live in, I live in District 3. Yes, I would love to live in your district, but I'm not moving.
You can live across Inter Parkway.
My name is Jim McKechnie. I live at 3110 Dixon Street Northeast in Brookhaven. I'd like the council to review one section of 2013-03-11. It has to do with the electrical permits and it has to do with radio and television broadcasts. I know it's just semantics, but the way it reads right now is the install, a permit is required if you install equipment or panels for power supply. It should read, "Equipment or panels to supply power," or to supply electrical power. It can be used in two ways because power supply to someone that's in the broadcast industry or even in computers will recognize if I install a power supply, I have to get a permit versus getting power from Georgia Power and distributing that to the equipment racks. So if they can just change that verbiage, I'd appreciate it.
What, tell me that code again.
It's the one that was just approved, 2013-03-11. It's in the electrical permit side, radio and television broadcast. I didn't print off a copy of the packet that was online.
So we'll have our building folks take a look at that.
Okay, I'm happy to discuss that later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any other comments? I appreciate you all coming and I think we could probably finish this and lessen it out. Would that be a record?
I'd like to take a little bit of your time.
Oh, well, all right, babe.
I just want to commend our mayor for having an excellent first meeting in J-Maxx's absence. Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Duncan.
So with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the city council. I'll need my knuckles with all the boys.